A board clerk.
Who of course is not here today.
Yeah.
Good, that's just.
That's how it works though, right?
Yes. I move.
Well, this was planned.
Yeah. We appoint Brian Elliott as clerk of the board for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint Brian Elliott as clerk of the board for 2025-26 school year. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. And now we'll move on to board president. Does anyone have any interest in?
I think that somebody that we have currently is doing a stupendous job. She is organized, she is calm, cool, collected, and I really like her as a president.
I feel like you came in prepared to say that. I was prepared to say, you know.
I was way prepared with this like a month ago.
I mean unless John over here would like to stand up and take a turn.
I would sit in his chair right here.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
Are you sure? I feel like.
Yeah, as long as Sid doesn't call me too much, I'm good. No, I'm kidding.
You know.
I'm kidding.
That's already more trouble.
Totally joking.
So I move, we elect Whitney Asher as president of the Board of Education for the 2025-26 school year.
Second.
We have a motion to elect Whitney Asher as president of the Board of Education for the 2025-26 school year. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries five zero.
I thought you were gonna vote now.
No. Okay, vice president.
I'm happy to be here, but also if other people have interest, I'm happy to let them have an opportunity to.
I move we elect John Stern as vice president of the Board of Education for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to elect John Stern as vice president of the Board of Education for the 2025-2026 school year. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries five zero. Board treasurer.
I move we approve Dietra Sladower as the board treasurer for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint Dietra Sladower as board treasurer for the 2025-2026 school year. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries five zero. Deputy board clerk.
I move we appoint Ashley Porter as a deputy clerk of the board for the 2025-26 school year.
Second.
We have a motion to appoint Ashley Porter as deputy clerk of the board for the 2025-26 school year. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries five zero. Okay. That's done. Any amendments to the agenda tonight?
I did add something late regarding superintendent evaluation. It's nothing too significant, but it's something I feel like we need to discuss.
Okay. We're ready to.
And that's after executive session later in the meeting.
I suppose it's already on the radio.
Yeah, it's already, yeah.
So I move we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries five zero. There are no patron, well, I take that back. Sorry, Mr. Allen. Any patron reports? Okay. Any board reports? Nope. Okay. Superintendent report.
Nor wanted me to share some lunch program information. In the month of June, we had 3,031 lunches served, 2,349 breakfasts served, and that comes out to an average of 168 lunches per day, which is really, really good. You know, when we first started this, 120 and 130 was really good, and occasionally we'd spike up a little bit, and now our average is right at about 170. And I think we've either crossed 200 a couple of times or gotten really close. So I feel like the program has been a success. It's used by a lot of people, and I feel like that's something we need to continue. Nor has done a really good job with it. She's grown it, she's formalized it, she's introduced breakfast. And she also wanted me to specifically thank Marcie, Tanya, and Lacey for all the work that they do. She says she couldn't do it without them. So just want to let you know that before I get into my report. We do currently have a full staff. We do continue to look for substitute teachers, however. If you know of someone who's interested, please send them our way. Ashley will get them signed up and give them instructions on how to ensure that they have appropriate licensure and get on our list to be called. I did want to inform you, and I couldn't remember if Ally's mentioned this or not, but we are, and it's in the handbook as well, the high school's looking at changing its banquet structure. We're gonna go away from the all-sport banquets at the end of each season. We're gonna shift them down to individual team banquets, so there'll be a lot more flexibility. I think the concept of a banquet is from an era gone by. Most of the time, people are already aware due to social media what has happened, and one, the cost of the banquets is starting to be a little bit prohibitive when we have meals. Two, I don't know if necessarily everyone, and I use this term loosely, but necessarily always appreciates or enjoys having to come together and spend that much time talking about things that largely they already know. Again, I'm going off of what feedback I've received, and no one has really complained necessarily, but I do feel like in terms of making these interesting, I feel like it's probably best, and I think we've talked to some staff members and they're in favor of it, to maybe go towards an individual banquet, which is what a lot of districts do, and then that team can bring their parents together, their players together, talk in a more intimate detail about what's going on. Maybe some inside jokes have happened throughout the year, you can share those stories, and people have a greater understanding, whereas when you have to make it broad and generic, it gets to be a little bit more of a challenge. So ultimately, we're looking at eliminating the fall sports and winter banquet and going towards individual team banquets. They'll be able to use our facilities if they want, or they can go to, you know, some sort of private party facility if they want. Then also too, we're looking at modifying the awards banquet. We're gonna change that to just a senior awards banquet, or a senior awards night, no banquet. The rest of it is to recognize underclassmen who made the honor roll, and no one shows up to that. It's truly seniors, and if they are an underclassman that shows up, it's because they have a sibling that's a senior. So we sit here and announce all these names and no one's there. It takes a lot of time. I do think we want to still recognize our seniors, and obviously we can bring the families together for that. I think by not making it a banquet, just by announcing everything, we can shorten it a little bit, get right to the heart of the matter, which is announcing scholarships and awards, and then moving on from there. Again, this is all mostly done in the name of efficiency, to try to improve timing, make these interesting. We've heard ad nauseam from people that they get banquitted out, especially, I will say, administrators at the end of the year, we're going to banquets all the time, and I think parents are, you know, those sports banquets many times are two to three hours, and if you don't want to get up in the middle of them and leave, which I think a lot of people don't, because they don't want to be rude, it's a lot, and you wind up listening and hearing things that you are well aware of. So I think a lot of those things are from eras in the past. As I mentioned a lot, we need to start doing some things differently. I think this is a good opportunity to try to rethink those. Still, attention for our kids, still having them, just in a way that's probably more efficient and can do so to a 21st century environment. Same thing, and also too with the honor roll, we probably recognize those honor roll students at like an afternoon assembly or something, which is what a lot of districts do. We'll just have some, you know, bring the kids in, make some announcements, kind of like what we do with our minimum school wards. We can still work on some of the details there, but ultimately, I want to let you know, if someone says, hey, I understand we're not doing the end of your banquets or end of season banquets, they are correct, we're gonna modify those, and then we'll go from there. We can always go back, I guess, if you guys get negative feedback, but I'm guessing people are gonna appreciate that. Adams Brown's gonna finish our fiscal audits on August 21st. They're gonna start the process here in probably about three weeks, two weeks. They usually start at the beginning of August. They make requests to Brian. Most of the stuff's done online anymore. They'll make an onsite visit for one or two days, and then we'll get it finished, so August 21st is when they're gonna be here. And I'm working on a plan to address the issues that we've had with the HVAC at the grade school. It's more of a longer-term plan. At some point, we're gonna have to bite the bullet, probably put some money into that. It appears that leaks are the cause of this, and apparently we've used Zoom locks on that project, and Zoom locks are not supposed to be used on a project like that for BRF. And ultimately, from what I understand, you're supposed to, I guess, solder copper together or something, and that's supposed to ensure that there are no leaks. It sounds like if you get a leak in this system, that can cause major problems, and that's what's happened. I want to stress, we've only really had problems at the worst time of the year, which is when it gets really, 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 really cold, which they already said could be a problem. But, and I will present you some options in the future as to what we want to do, but I think we need to go in sections. The problem is, is accessing those lines in the SOFITS is labor-intensive, and I don't think it's gonna be overly cheap. But I also think if this is a system that needs to last us for another 20 years, and seven years old already, at some point, we're gonna have to probably address it. I've been working with Mike on some solutions, and I'm trying to find the most cost-effective way, but I do think Windows will help, I do think New Doors will help, but, and I do think there's a way we can budget for this long-term or reduce sections and get it addressed. But it sounds like in visiting with, and we've had multiple vendors look at this, those joints, those Zoom locks, aren't necessarily over time overly reliable, and we're then going to try something different, I guess.
So, just out of curiosity, when you're talking about Zoom locks, this is not what was installed with the system? It's something that we put.
It was installed with the system.
So if it was installed with the system, and they shouldn't have installed it with the system, don't we go back to whoever installed it and say?
We can. I don't think with the time that has passed, they're going to do anything about it. I mean, I suppose we can try to take legal action or whatever, but I don't think going back to them seven years later is gonna be a viable solution.
Seven years ago, they may have been not known to be bad in this setting, and now, I mean, there are press fitting versus a soldered fitting, which is what they use in water lines too, but that might have been, industry can change on a dime, and everybody's looking for a quicker, easier way to do it, and that's probably why they did it, because soldering takes more time, energy, and effort, but.
And I do think you're gonna get into, if I'm to understand correctly, the engineer's gonna walk through, they signed off on it, I mean, you know how that goes. It's gonna be, everyone's gonna draw their line in the sand. Regardless, I feel like we need to address it. I'll come to you with some plans, and you guys will have final say on this.
Mike doesn't have a little soldering iron that he can go with.
Well, to be honest with you, I've actually asked, like, to what degree can we do some of this stuff? The problem is, is it's not accessible. And in its long runs, and there's, and we don't know where they're at, you don't have like a map of them. Jason, I'm speaking out of turn here, you can fill in the gaps here, but ultimately, this copper pipe should be soldered together to ensure, almost like a foolproof way to ensure that there are no leaks, and it was done in a way that it shouldn't have, or it's just more convenient, and I think over time, we've fixed. And again, it's not drastic. You know, our air conditioning is great down there, right now it's wonderful, and for seven and eight months out of the nine months, it's wonderful. Even when it gets cold, it's good. It's when it gets down to really, really cold temperatures that if there's even a minor leak, it causes problems. I do think the fact that we're gonna secure the building better will help with that, but I also think too, in looking at this and visiting with literally three different vendors on this, that they said, you want to address this because if leaks get worse and you start losing this refrigerant, it puts stress on your compressor, your coils, all this good stuff, and you, once you get into that, then you've got big problems. Jason, fill in the blanks.
Yeah, well, the other problem is, is if fittings are not, I'm sure what will happen is the soldered fitting is this long, the press fitting is a little bit longer, so there's not gonna be room to solder it in, you're gonna have to cut stuff, and it's probably gonna be a lot more labor-intensive.
They mentioned something about cutting, so that you're probably right.
And so it's not gonna be a quick, easy, and like you said, if they're.
And there's lots of them up there.
And you could have, it wouldn't surprise me if there's not a thousand fittings up there at the grade school that need done, and it only takes one to leak.
Yep. So, anyway, that's, and I.
Mr. Good News.
Sorry. I mean, there's only one or two fittings, it'll be five.
I can bring Mike up here too, to better explain it, I think he's got a firm grasp on it, so.
He could explain it, I still wouldn't understand it, so they haven't.
Good point. Okay, so moving forward with that again too, we're not gonna do anything until you guys approve it, but I do want to try to address that at some point. First meeting of the fiscal year, I really want to kind of make my claim here, because I feel like in the past, I've really tried to present this case, and I want to be able to, down the road, our future selves look back on this and be able to point to, here's a point in time when this was stated. And I'm completely agnostic in terms of mood. This isn't a good or a bad thing, it's just real, and I know whenever I deal with situations in my own life, I want people to deal straight with me, regardless of whether that makes me happy or sad. And, you know, the mindset I use is, I'm really trying to find a way to grow into our new future after we've right-sized from the past. That's the best way to message it. We've closed the books on our past fiscal year, or essentially, we've done that, and we've started, you know, the process of opening a new fiscal year, and we're starting to compile expenditures on that. I'm gonna reiterate what I've been saying, our budget situation is something that we need to be very cognizant of going forward, and this isn't just a one-year thing. We're looking at the next five to seven years of having to have a plan in place to try to address it, to provide our best services to kids. And I've spent a lot of time on this, that depending how you want to define operational, and each district does it differently, the metrics I would use, we're running a deficit of about $175,000, which is a little bit higher than I estimated, but within the ballpark. After new monies and costs for this year, we theoretically could have a deficit of about $220,000 at year-end. I'm working very diligently, and we've got some with student accident insurance that's gonna cut into that. I want to cut that down to about $100,000 at year-end, and then we try to whittle it down from there. That's ultimately my objective, and this isn't gonna be, you can't fix this in one year. Ultimately, we're gonna have to do something different. And, you know, I want to try to put this out there so that this isn't a blind side, because I feel like as long as we appropriately inform people, the ultimate specific decisions have to be made, shouldn't come as a surprise, and they may not like them, but this is just the reality of it. And quite frankly, if I may speak as a superintendent, there's not a lot of discretion here. There's not a lot of what do you guys think, or like, we're gonna talk about some terms as far as operations go, that I feel like are really gonna have to drive this discussion. Again, if this was a one-year dip in enrollment or two years, which many districts face, in fact, there's a neighboring district that we've talked about, or I've discussed this with, it's not an issue. I showed you the numbers, and theoretically, the next seven years, we're gonna lose 15 kids a year, give or take. This isn't something that we just will get through and it's done. We need to have a plan in place, prepare for it, be proactive. And ultimately, and I know we're very tradition-laden here, I know that better than anyone, I know we get very comfortable in doing what we're used to doing, and we just can't do those things. And we're gonna have to think, in some ways, maybe outside the box, in some ways, maybe it's just a simple change, that the student accident insurance I'm gonna recommend, I think is a simple change. There are others that aren't gonna be as simple. And, you know, ultimately, if the money isn't in the treasury, I'm not sure how we move forward. And to the point where I'm almost contemplating putting in almost like an informal Pago system to where if someone requests something new, then we're gonna have to cut something out in the moment, because we can't let that get any deeper. And also too, I do my best to try to understand every purchase we make, we make thousands of purchases in a year, I can't remember every specific one, I use budget numbers. And, you know, when someone comes to me and says, I want this, we're gonna have to be very cognizant of cost, you know, as I mentioned here. Much of this was predicted, I had planned this from about five or six years ago, when I started putting some anecdotal evidence together, some data, and I'd made a presentation a couple of years ago saying, this is our future. So there have been some unexpected items that have come up that have really exacerbated this, that have maybe sped it longer, made it a little worse. Our average dollars, I still don't know how last year's kindergarten class, the makeup was what it was, I don't. It's a shock, we've never had that. We've had some kids leave the district for a variety of reasons. Our co-op assessments, I haven't talked about that, we're going through some co-op discussions right now about increased the assessments, and I don't want to get into this, but we recently found out our agreement that we had in 2020 was rendered moot. There was a process that wasn't completed, and it's caused some angst amongst the co-op. We're gonna get it figured out. Both sides have good arguments, and we're really trying to work through that, but that also, that's where a lot of our new monies, if we go through with a potential increase in assessment, after our new monies, we're actually down a little bit this year. So these are things that have been unexpected, in addition to the expected enrollment, that have greatly affected our situation. Just to kind of highlight the circumstance, there is a good chance our kindergarten class, occasionally we'll trip over this number, but in the high teens, low twenties, 20 is probably the highest kindergarten number we're gonna have going forward. Occasionally, we'll get 23, 24, we'll have some, you know, Muggins or something, but for planning purposes, 20. That will mean while we'll get sometimes 22, 23, there will be, sometimes it will be 15, it will be 16. Some of you have been in Elwood since the 70s, I can't recall an incoming kindergarten class ever being in the teens. Right now, I think we're sitting at 19 for next year. And that is historical, that's not, well, back in the 60s, we had this and that, this is, never has happened before. It's neither good nor bad, it just means we have to come prepared for it. And again, I want to stress, we can't continue to do what we've been doing. What that looks like specifically, we don't know, we will discuss it. I do actually want to form some committee to try to get some staff, some board perspective to try to figure out what do we prioritize, and I don't even know what the model is, I'm, you know, do we take surveys, what, I don't know, how we prioritize, and I also know too, you ask people what they're gonna prioritize, self-interest comes into play. I know very few people outside of the superintendent who says, in a couple of years, probably won't need a pure superintendent, who says, yeah, come to my position, that we can do without. So some of that, I could probably predict how it's gonna go, but make no mistake, we need to address some of these things. I think there's gonna have to be a discussion at some point about revenue as well. We have a very unique district in the way we're structured. Some of it we can control, some of it we can't. We have a K8 Catholic school here that has 50 kids that otherwise would be going, I would imagine, to the public school. That's not a value judgment, that just makes our situation unique. I've heard some commentary about, there's other 2A districts in the same budget environment, same base day per pupil, same formula, that are not going through this. Well, that's because they have differing situations. We are missing out on about 50-ish kids that we don't get. By the time you figure weighted FT, it's about 75, we don't get that. Our library arrangement is very unique, it, I think that dates back to like 1968. I get it, that we just roll it over, move on, roll it over, move on, roll it over, move on. Not a value judgment, it's worked for us by and large. At some point, and you hate to have jurisdictional lines drawn in the sand in a small town, because we all have to share, we know we have to do that, but at some point, the school is gonna have to ask, do we need to leverage everything we're currently leveraging and paying for all of them?
So I do have a question about that, because I've thought about that quite a bit since the last time we discussed that, and it is very interesting how this whole thing works, because USD 355 bears the brunt of everything, and it is not a school building, it is a community building, that's not, that's open extended hours outside of school and in the summer, and running programs that are to benefit the community at large and not specifically the school. And while I understand that this would be a burden on the city because they're not prepared, it's not in their budget, they would, you know, how do they do this? But I think it's worth noting that we need to start the discussion, even if it's a transition of, today we're bearing the cost of the 100% of it, and next year, maybe it's at a proportion of that. And so we can transition this over, because I don't know how, you're right, when you have this deficit of $200,000, where do you find those dollars? And to me, this is probably looking at the staffing and the cost of the library. To me, this is one of the biggest things, because it doesn't benefit the school.
And it's unique from all other, most other 2A districts. Again, when you're making that comparison, when people ask, well, how come my hometown isn't doing this? It's because we've had a unique circumstance for a while, and we've always had enough to, enough students we've been able to operate efficiently. Once you get into the teens, that dynamic changes a little bit, and I think we have to start opening those discussions, and I don't know what they look like. You know, to your point about the city, I'm going off of rough numbers here, they're supposed to be levying two mills, I think, and we've been working on this, we've been communicating, that's in the original arrangement. I think just due to, you know, rollover circumstances and time, they've been levying maybe a little bit less than that. I know Chris has been working diligently to try to bring that up. But when you start looking at shared costs, I, don't quote me on this, but I think we get between $13,000 and $20,000 from the city to, and that's their share, and then it gets proportioned out in various ways, library rent, materials, all that stuff. The rest is us, director, salary.
That's a huge.
All the workers, you know, a lot of the tech, you know, other things that, you know, obviously insurance, utilities, all that stuff. And again, the purpose, I think, originally, back in 1968, I'm sure there was probably a balance, and then over time, it does this for whatever reason, just the way the formulas work and the way things change, as they law changes, and all of a sudden, it does this, and then you're at a point where, to your point, I don't think you can change overnight. At some point, and I will say, we can't control what the city does, it can do what it wants, but tough decisions are gonna have to be made to where maybe the school says, well, what does, what do we need this library for? In a traditional 2A school, you'd have, at the middle school, high school, grade school, you'd have a room for a library like we do down there, and a, here we'd have a big building, and we need the library for the day, 8 o'clock to 3:33. You'd have probably an hourly employee down there, hourly employee up here. Some schools don't even have it open, don't even have them open all day. You have like a library period, one person goes between both buildings. Let's say we have hourly employee, hourly employee, 8 to 3:33, August to May. That's what we need it for. Does the school district need it for any other time? Maybe there's a random event or something, and you can do a coke bingo or something. If we don't need that, do we start asking those questions? And I get it, and many of you mentioned that, 75 people come and whatever, I get all that. Throw your chair, scream, do whatever you want, it doesn't fix this. And again, I go back to, and I personalize this, how would I want to be treated? How would I want to be provided the information if this was occurring? I would not want someone to tell me, well, we'll look into and see. No, things are gonna have to change. I don't want to get anyone's hopes up. That doesn't mean it's negative, it just means, and we've got a plan, I, of all the people that are in charge of budgets, I've been telling us about this, I've been preparing for it, I've been trying to plant seeds, but when it comes time to actually execute the plan, then whatever that might be, we have to all be on the same page, and I would hope even the community would kind of understand. I'm not saying they like it all. I mean, I was sitting here in spring, recommending potentially eliminating a program that personally I love, that affects me personally, but I understand there's something bigger in play. And I get it, it's not our job to, you know, hope that people feel good about things, but I do think that the more front-loading we can do, the better received it is. At the very least, our obligation is fulfilled. To me, the obligation is to plan, prepare, and inform. The actual execution, whether they like it or not, no one likes it. But, and this touches on a lot of things, because then what, the next step in this is going to be, well, what if we pay for it ourselves? So we're not going to do something, can we do X? I'm not gonna let you do X. I don't, we can't afford it, I don't feel like it's necessary in this special market. I'll get a benefactor that will pay for it.
Then you have to manage.
But it, that opens up another can of worms, and then immediately, it's, but it's, if it's not a budget problem anymore, why can't we do it? It's more complex than that, because then you said you have things like precedent, you have management, you have liability, things, and I will say, no one else cares about that. That's not for them to decide, and if something goes wrong, we go home and we're fine, but this chair here, the chair up there, the administrative chair, and that chair, some people in our office, all of a sudden have to start taking phone calls and answering some hard, hard questions. So the next step in this is that, and they're well-intentioned, I'll find a benefactor to pay for it so you don't have to. And that sounds really good, but from the manager's chair, that just shifts the problem from budget to management or something else. And I guess the reason I'm saying this is. And, and I guess the reason I'm saying this is, I've been in, this has essentially been my home my entire life, at least my professional life. It's been my home as a professional for all but four years. I care greatly about now, I care about greatly the going forward. And the only way I know how to address this is by planning and implementing. And I'm agnostic to the emotions of it, and that, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm not unsympathetic to it. But I also know too, at some point, when you make the decision, you have to just move on and say, this is what we're doing. And I want to put this out there at the beginning of the year, so as these things become real, we can point back to that. And maybe it's this YouTube video, and we say, we do, we know, the community knows. And, and again, I want to stress, that doesn't mean we're, it's crackers and water and we're bare bones, everything. I want to keep by and large what we've been doing. That's why if we cut that deficit, we can keep doing operationally what we've been doing. It's just we can't do anything new, and when an opportunity arises to cut, typically, it's staff, there's other times, it's non-salary operating expenses, we do it, without a lot of disruption. And so anyway, any questions on that? I just really want to kind of plant that flag so that there is no confusion. Last but not least, preview of coming attractions, I'll be out of the district Monday, July twenty-first. We've got an event from a sponsor, and then in Hayes, and then the week of July twentieth, I'm taking vacation. If any guys need me during that time, feel free to call. I already, you know, told Ashley and Brian, if they need to reach out, they can get, get hold of me. Enrollment's at the beginning of July, or, I'm sorry, at the end of July, beginning of August. And it's, we're about here, twenty-five, twenty-six, we're starting to make plans, starting to work on budgets. Here in the next week, we're gonna start talking about getting your items, so. Any questions on the report? If not, that's all I have, Madam President.
We don't have any administrative reports.
Nope.
So we will move on to consent agenda.
Okay, consent agenda, a couple of items here, we've got the minutes to approve, had a couple of questions on claims, I think I answered those. Accepting gifts to the district, this is kind of our year-end reconciliation with the foundation. They give us reimbursement for a lot of the things we have to pay for, that was due to the IRS, Debbie, you probably remember those discussions. Also too, we did have from the slammer, an eight-foot metal bench that was donated, and I think we found a home for that, I think our football team's gonna use that, so.
The slammer?
The slammer, yeah, I don't know, John, do you wanna share?
I thought that was a prison.
Backstory?
It was a prison, it was the historic Rice County Jail, my eyes can't see.
That slammer, gotcha.
Gives a meaning to being benched and.
It's got experience to bench.
And then we also have a lot of year-end technology that we want to get rid of, this is all very old stuff. We're gonna try to sell what we can, most of it's gonna be recycled, Ryan has assured me it's pretty much worthless, can't get upgrades, it's from, I think, some of this from like two thousand and ten. He said the Chromebooks are worthless, he said a lot of the devices can't receive updates anymore, so it's just old, old stuff. We'll probably put some notice out if someone wants to purchase some. Again, I, I think he's got a sense for what will sell and what won't. I think most of this is probably unusable stuff based off of reading the tea leaves, what he said. And then the rest is our routine business, I don't know if you guys have any questions on all of that. We do that under consent agenda now, we used to do that as individual motions, and I did, I think, call KSB many years ago now and ask if we can do that on consent agenda. I have seen other districts do it, and they said yes, so that's what we're going to do going forward. Any questions on any of those? It's very similar to what we've done in the past. This year, we'll serve in the minutes, Brian pretty much copies and pastes all of that information, so we have a record of it, so if we ever have to reference it, we can go back and see those things. I'm typically talking like mileage rates, copy fees, things like that. Some of those PDFs are rather long, those petty cash reports, activity fund reports. I would encourage you not to look through every single page of those, some of those number in hundreds, but I do try to be as transparent as I can with you to get that information. Other than that, I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move, we approve consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Okay, we'll go down to old business, handbooks.
Handbooks, I appreciate your patience with this, V, I added some of these today. This is a final read, so you guys have had a chance to look at all of these. I did take note of the fact that we had a contradiction between the two student handbooks, five days and seven days for stand home with the flu, we did address that, it's five days for both now. That is kind of the standard practice, I was with Mayor Shannon on that, so I think we've got that squared away. The rest of them are pretty simple, if you want to look and spend some time there. All of the changes, I've kind of highlighted in the motion there, beneath the motion. One-to-one handbook is date changes only. Classified staff handbook is date change, and sick personally buyback changed to seventy-five dollars. That's based off of the negotiated agreement, we gotta put that through all of our books, for all of our handbooks. Licensed staff handbook, same thing as classified, date change, sick personally buyback changed to seventy-five dollars per day. Coach's sponsors handbook, date change only. EGS student handbook, a date change. School messenger change, we're gonna use that as our official texting app, communication app. Home for flu time change, that's the change that was brought up earlier. Immunization changes and lunch schedule changes. EMS EHS student handbook, I'm not gonna read through all those, but those are all the changes that we made, all of these are highlighted. Crisis plan date change, we did update it with the new principal from St. Joseph, new contact information. So that's the information there, you approve these, we will then start disseminating them in time for enrollment and for anyone who might, who knows for the next year. And I appreciate everyone's, all the staff who worked on that, who got that to me in the time and the manner, that's not an easy process. And it takes a while for me to kind of review all of them, make sure we've got the language the way we want it.
I move, we approve the licensed staff handbook, classified staff handbook, coaches, sponsor handbook, crisis plan. EGS student handbook, EMS EHS student handbook, and one-on-one technology handbook for the twenty-five, twenty-six as presented.
Shouldn't the school year as presented?
School year as presented.
Second. Here we have a motion to approve a licensed staff handbook, classified staff handbook, coaches and sponsor handbook, crisis plan, EGS student handbook, EMS EHS student handbooks, and the one-to-one technology handbook for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Revenue neutral rate, schedule the hearing for, or, I'm sorry, schedule the hearing for revenue neutral rate and budget. This is pretty procedural, five fifty and five fifty-five, we spend about five minutes in advance of the regular meeting, five minutes for one, five minutes for the other. We don't have to do this, I think, because we have to publish it publicly in the newspaper and online. September eighth, two thousand twenty-five is when we, I'm recommending you conduct that, that's what we've always done it. Again, it's procedural, we have to notify people in other ways, but we do like to put some of the minutes to, let everyone on the board to act on it.
I move, we schedule the revenue root neutral rate and the budget hearing for five fifty and five fifty-five respectively on September eighth, two thousand twenty-five, and the school slash community library prior to the regular September board.
Second. We have a motion to schedule revenue neutral rate and budget hearings for five fifty PM and five fifty-five PM respectively on September eighth, two thousand twenty-five, the school community library prior to the regular September board meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Anything you want to add to revenue neutral rate for budget?
Yeah, basically, just want to let you know, it's gonna go up a lot because we obviously pass upon issues. So whatever rate provides a neutral revenue, obviously, we're not gonna have neutral revenue because it has a bond issue. So if people ask why it went up so significantly, it's largely because of that. I do not have a number yet, I'm not finished with the budget, but I did want to let you know that that almost doesn't even have context for this year because we're adding a levy that we've never had before, based off of what the election told us to do. So we're gonna far exceed our revenue neutral rate simply because of our bond issue. That's really all I have on that.
We'll go down to student accident insurance.
Okay, I am recommending a new proposal from Governor of Student Health Insurance for twenty-five, twenty-six. It's a little different model than we've had in the past, and I do want to thank Ashley, she acquires all this information and keeps it for me throughout the year so that when we do need to talk about it, it's orderly and structured, so she deserves some kudos for this. But in looking at this, we have basically a new plan that's not as benefit-rich, but costs a lot less. And I think, I think still kind of serves the purpose or intent of what we want to do without, while still allowing us to cut costs. If you look at this document here, that first page, the class one is the student and athletic accidents. That's the student accident insurance for both athletic and just regular school activities that are led, that require a claim of less than twenty-five thousand dollars. Class two is for the catastrophic insurance, which has a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible, it kicks in for anything above twenty-five thousand. Non-athletic, because CASHA covers that, so you have catastrophic CASHA. Anything in a CASHA sponsored activity above twenty-five thousand will be taken care of with that policy. That's all you're required to have. I'm recommending we also have a catastrophic plan for any non-CASHA-related accidents that cost more than twenty-five thousand. The cost is right there, that's the forty-five thirty that class two. Then we also like to have something offered for kids, so if they do get hurt, and it's a relatively minor injury, they have some insurance to help support them. However, I want to stress, these all have caps. The old plan used to have a hundred percent usual customary, above and beyond whatever insurance existed. These have caps of like fifteen hundred, and you can go through them there, they're on the, what, third page there, twenty-five hundred, a thousand, a thousand, five hundred. I think we need to change our model to, we're providing some insurance to help with some small costs, and now there's almost like a donut hole. If it's above twenty-five thousand, we get a bunch to take care of, if it's five hundred or, you know, a thousand, it'll be covered in excess of what you already have. If you get that eight or nine thousand, don't know what to do, but again, hard decisions have to be made. I don't think we can continue to pay twenty, and I think our new quote was gonna be, what, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five thousand, something like that. I can recommend twenty-five thousand dollars for student accident insurance when we can get this coverage, that's not as benefit-rich, but still provides some coverage and takes care of the catastrophic, which is the big one for me morally. The smaller one, you can make an argument that it's not our job to be taking care of broken bones, I'm gonna be honest with you. I've always felt like we've done that, so I want to try to keep something going. I do like to know that if something serious happened, you'd be taken care of, regardless of whether it was on a CASHA-sponsored court or not. So I feel, and that's a relatively cheap policy, so I feel like that is something that we want to go with. Fortunately for us, KIX, which is our new PNC plan for last year, new PNC company, they actually offer this in one product. I mean, it's probably multiple solutions, but one invoice and one offering, and we select what we want, so I'm recommending you select this. Total cost is three thousand eight hundred seven dollars and eighty cents. I feel like that is a great benefit. It still shows the board, okay, and the district cares for kids when accidents occur, but it's in a more cost-effective way and allows us to lob off twenty thousand in savings immediately.
Do we have any idea how frequently this is used?
We do, we got that claims utilization report a couple of weeks ago. It's used quite a bit, and in fact, our cost, the reason our premium was so high this year was because we had, two thousand twenty-three, I think they said, was just torture for us. They had a lot of claims, a lot of claims. And obviously, the more utilization you have, and until that falls off, you're gonna get hit with higher premium. I don't think that was ever gonna drop below twenty thousand anymore, it's just gonna go up. And obviously too, when it's available for people to use, and it's a hundred percent usual customary, you're gonna get a lot of utilization. So I feel like this kind of puts the brakes on some of that, gives us some cost control, yet still allows us to offer something. So if something does happen, there's a little bit of support there.
So something happens in sports?
Yep.
Mom and dad's insurance kicks in first?
Correct, this is all access, in excess.
In excess of?
If, in the absence of insurance, it can become primary. It can be, and that's where the rubber meets the road in terms of the specifics, how it happened, and we fill out a claim form, send it off. But yes, that is correct.
And we use it quite a bit, huh?
When we had the usual customary hundred percent, yep, we did, quite a bit. And it just became unaffordable, again, it's.
We had a broken arm out of, in my household.
What's that?
We had a broken arm out of, out of my household.
And again, please understand, I'm not saying we shouldn't have used it, if it's there, use it.
I know you're gonna.
Yeah, okay. I'm just saying philosophically, I think we have to ask those questions.
Yep.
So claims pair BMI, I'm assuming that's a BMI out of Missouri?
I would imagine, I, we work with KIX mostly, and that could very well be.
Because this is with Gallagher, right?
Yep. We do everything through KIX, and that's like our PNC, that, yep, that's the company we kind of work with.
I think it looks, I mean, I, I think we need to do exactly what you're saying, we need to get our costs down, our premiums down, if we can.
I just don't know how we can continue to afford, in this environment, to pay twenty-five thousand dollars for student accident insurance. Most of the districts I've talked with have something like this, KIX, they have a small plan. I feel very strongly about the catastrophic, if something happened, I wouldn't want it to be, well, it wasn't a CASHA-sponsored event, so I guess, you know, tough luck. I want, they need to get compensated for that.
Right.
And again, the cost there, forty-five thirty, that, that's nothing. The, where you get the philosophical discussion is, how much do you pay for just day-to-day accidents? And, and there's, there's, it's debatable, I mean, there is no right or wrong. I just feel like with our budget environment, and considering a lot of other districts actually use the KIX model now, they don't use the model we use. This is, I think this is something that's proven.
I move, we approve the proposal from Gallagher Student Health, KIX, for the student accident insurance for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year as presented.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the proposal from Gallagher Student Health, KIX, for the student accident insurance for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. And that'll take us to executive session.
Madam President, I move, we go into the executive session to discuss the recommended candidates for hire, job performance slash status of personnel pursuit, and not elected personnel exception under coma. And the open meeting will resume in the boardroom at.
Shall we go maybe fifteen minutes?
Seven oh two. Seven oh three.
Maybe seven oh five, just for you.
Seven oh five.
Second. Here we have a motion to go into executive session to discuss recommended candidates for hire and job performance status of personnel pursuant to not elected personnel exception under coma, and the open meeting will resume in the boardroom at seven oh five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Same ones we had and then just change it. My big thing is we've got, traditionally we do it for the whole year. Now with one going off, it does change a little bit. Do you guys just want us to keep it the same and go from there? I mean that, I think we can do that by consensus here.
Yeah.
Basically whatever we had last year, just carry it over and then make the changes in January.
That's good.
Perfect. We'll do that.
I do need signatures. Every board member needs to sign these in front, including you Whitney and then Whitney, you've got a special group over here. Do we have some pens?